Okay, it's seven thirty-four. This is the May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one Town of Osning Planning Board. Let's go around the screens and introduce ourselves. Sandy?
Sandy and Nellie, Secretary.
Kristy?
Kristy Adana, Attorney filling in for Kathy Zalantis.
Valerie?
Valerie Minascha, Planning Consultant to the Planning Board.
Gareth?
Gareth Huffam, Planning Board Member.
Margaret?
Margaret Khan, Secretary.
Alan?
Can you see?
Carolyn Stevens, Planning Board Member.
Donna?
Lushar, Planning Board Member.
Oh, Jim?
Jim Basina, Planning Board Member.
Dan?
ENCRCA Consulting Engineer to the Planning Board.
Very good. And I'm Tsimar Chin, Chair. The first item on the agenda is the Borrego Solar Saint Augustine Church property, three eighty-one North Highland Avenue. Battery storage system, site plan review, continuing the public hearing. Is that applicant here? I saw you before. Yeah, there you go. So Valerie, where do we stand on this?
So I sent the board a draft resolution for your review. At this point in time, there have been no additional information submitted by the applicant, nor is there any other outstanding items that are required by the applicant. So this board can consider the resolution for adoption if you so please.
Okay. Has the board had a chance to take a look at the draft resolution?
Yes.
Yes, I did. I saw one typo on the top of page two. Instead of saying tier, it says tire.
Thank you. I will amend that. That's all. I'm glad somebody reads that.
You know, sometimes when we read these things, we just skim by it over the title.
Well, I do that, too. I mean, of course, I review things as well. And yes, your eyes play tricks on you. So thank you.
We call it a squirmor's error, right? Okay, so what do we have to do with this matter? Can we have a motion on this resolution? Or does the applicant have anything more to add at this point?
We don't have anything new to add this week.
Public hearing, I believe, Mr. Chairman, is still open. Yeah, so I know you previously asked, but if you want to just ask the public if there's anyone here for the public one more time before the board takes a vote to close the public hearing.
Absolutely. Are there any members of the public here interested in the Borrego Solar issue? Not seeing any. Could I have a motion to?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, Donna, how do you vote?
Yes.
Gareth, how do you vote?
I heard him say yes.
Will we have the opportunity to comment on this resolution if we close the public hearing? I think so, right?
Yeah.
You can still comment on the resolution before you vote.
So I vote yes.
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay, so Gareth, I believe you have a comment on this resolution?
So under the conditions for approval that are listed, number three regards to lighting of the battery energy storage system. And it's kind of vague. It says shall be limited to that minimally required for safety and operational purposes. And I was wondering if we could clarify that a little bit, just because while that site will be pretty well shielded by daytime views, nighttime views from the Croton area, if it's lit, will be quite prominent. And so I'm wondering if we could make that lighting be only on motion detection as opposed to constantly lit.
I don't see any reason why not.
Applicant, do you have any opinion on that? Downward facing lights and that low, specify the type, the amount of brightness.
Mm-hmm.
Any comment?
Applicant, do you have any response?
Both of those conditions would be totally fine with us. Those are, there is no proposed uplighting at the facility. Everything is motion activated. So yeah, both of those conditions would be consistent with what we're already planning to do there. It's totally fine.
Excellent.
Great. That was my only comment.
Any other comments? Donna?
So I do have a comment, but I don't know that it's necessary to amend the resolution. But it's just with the beautiful planting plan that they've proposed here. It is, you know, I've mentioned it before that there are definitely deer in that area. So it would be great if there was an investment to protect the plants, not just wait and see if something happens to them in a year. Because without any protection, even if they are listed as deer resistant, a young plant will have a hard time surviving. So I hope that the applicant would consider that. And, you know, so there's no need to replace after the year. Thank you.
Alan, you have any comments or questions at this time?
No.
Jim, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
No, I'm ready to move forward.
Okay. Dan, do you have any questions or comments at this time? Take that as a no?
That would be a no.
Okay. Kristy, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
No.
And Valerie, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
No.
Okay, so can I have a motion to the effect with those amended items that Gareth and Donna had mentioned?
Don't move. Second. Oops.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
I'll second.
Hey, Gareth, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carolyn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Donna, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Valerie, what else do we have to do with this?
That's it. Once we have the final resolution, we'll send it, or I guess your way for your signature.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, applicant. I guess we all have to see you for a while then.
Good luck.
Have a good night.
Good to hear.
The next item on the agenda is the Rinaldi subdivision, thirty-nine Stormy Town Road, nine knot subdivision, continuing the public hearing. Is the applicant here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is here. Chuck Etchick with Ling and Engineering representing the new applicant.
Right. Thank you. Valerie, how do we stand on this right now?
So this application is still before you for public hearing. The applicant was, did revise some of the plans. And I know I undertook a review, and I'm sure Dan looked at some of the revisions. And then also, as requested by the board last month, the tree warden has been engaged to do some spot checking on the tree plans. That has not been completed yet, but the work is underway.
Does the applicant have anything more to add at this time?
No, Mr. Chairman, we do not.
Okay.
Other than we would like to try and see if we can't move this along. I mean, Valerie's review memo had a couple of suggestions, I think mostly conditions for final approval. We haven't seen anything from Dan, so kind of interested in knowing what he said. But we are, hopefully, would like to make application to the Health Department and move this into final.
Dan, do you have any comments at this time?
I mean, I have some, you know, technical questions that I can go through with the applicant. But I think there's a couple of things I'd like to just point out to the board to make sure there's no, that we don't end up with something that the board didn't want. The first thing that the board should be aware of is with the walls, in particularly at the end of the cul-de-sac, we have the pond there, we've got some walls that it would appear is a condition where we're going to have to install some type of fence to protect, for fall protection. So it seems likely we're going to need a fence there. The other issue, in the plan set, the applicant's proposing two different styles of stone walls. There's like a dry-laid stone wall detail and a modular block retaining wall. So I think there was a lot of discussion regarding the appearance of the face of that wall by the cul-de-sac, particularly in, you know, what would be the folks down at Torbank would be looking at. So on the plans, it says stone-faced, I believe, first it was a stone-faced retaining wall. And Chuck, you might want to just chime in on this one. I wasn't sure if that was intended to be a modular retaining wall system with a stone face appearance? Or are we doing like a poured concrete wall with a stone facade attached to it?
The intent was to, because of the concern about the visual impact, the intent was it to be a concrete wall with a natural stone veneer.
Okay.
Not a pre-engineered modular block wall, but a wall that would look like a stone wall on the adjacent properties.
Okay, because we have different details, and I don't believe there was one that illustrated that type of wall. So just, you know, as that was really an important issue to the board, I just want to be certain that there's clarity in the plans as to, you know, what wall is going where. And, you know, even if it's intended to be, you know, the walls will require building permits, and it'll be a fully engineered set, but the issue is the appearance.
Understood. And if we need to add a detail to clarify that, that's, we will.
Yeah, I mean, just like, just to indicate that the intent is that it's a concrete wall with a stone facing attached to it. You guys added another hydrant, but I just wanted to make sure that the fire department had seen that, and they're good to go with the locations. I speculated where they may want it, but I want to be certain that they're okay with it.
So the fire department had approved the prior drawings, it only won, and we now have two.
Oh, okay.
So.
All right, then it should be fine. And, yeah, there's a couple of technical things I'll go through with you at a later time. But I just wanted to read that into the record, since I know that some of those were critical issues to the board.
Understand.
Thanks, Dan. Kristy, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
No, I don't.
Valerie, has the applicant managed to discuss any of your, anything in response to your memo?
I think, well, a couple of things that Dan highlighted, which was dealing with the walls, I just made note that the planning board should look at the details of those walls. There's just a few other things. Mostly, it's just highlighting the work that's being undertaken by the tree wardens. So once that gets verified, we'll be able to move to the next steps of review on this particular application. And that's really the last outstanding issue. And then I just recommended that the plans for the sidewalks along Stormy Town Road get referred to Superintendent of Highway for his review. Other than that, I just have a few conditions of approval that the board is going to want to consider. Specifically, I also wanted to highlight that the applicant has agreed to pay a recreation fee as the town, as required by the town. And that should definitely be made a condition of approval, as well as that they're requesting waivers for subdivision regulations. But this is, excuse me, waivers for sidewalks and street lighting requirements along the new proposed road, because instead the applicant is proposing to install sidewalks along Stormy Town Road. So those are really the two major conditions of approval that, at this point in time, I would recommend the board to consider. But really, at this point, the outstanding issue is the trees and the tree replacement and the planting plans. I did note that on the planting plan, there's a lot of one species, specifically maple. And I identified that that is something that the board typically likes to see some diversification of tree species, and that was suggested to the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board at this time? Gareth?
Yeah. Dan, thank you for bringing up the issue of the stone wall appearance. I wonder if we could make it even more specific. I know somewhere in there already it says, you know, that it's natural stone. I wonder if we could say like natural stone with a rustic, dry-laid appearance. So I think dry-laid wall appearance, just so that, because there are, even with natural stone, you can have, you know, dramatically different appearances. And we want it to fit in with the, you know, the tour view sort of woody aesthetic. So if we could say, you know, natural stone, rustic, dry-laid wall appearance, that would be great if the applicant agrees.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the only thing the applicant has, would like to comment on that, is that you can't have a veneer that has a dry-laid appearance. We don't mind the rustic. We don't mind agreeing to building a sample before and get it approved, really flexible and all that, try to get there. But veneers don't typically come very well when they're trying to match as they're thinner, and that dry-laid joint doesn't have the appearance that you might can.
Well, the problem is that sometimes the veneers, as you say, are very thin, and so they tend to be very planer. And then they don't look anything like a natural wall. There are some that have a little bit more three dimensionality to them, and that's a matter of choice. I would direct you to Casa Building Materials in Elmsford. They've got some nice samples of their natural stone veneers. I think you can get pretty close to a dry-laid wall appearance, if not exact. I mean, if that's what you're, if that's what you can shoot for, you know, I would be okay with that. But it's got to be something that you're shooting for at least, so that you don't just have, you know, very planer, you know, slabs of cut stone, that would not work.
Can you look at more three-dimensional type of stone veneer?
Yes. We'll provide manufacturer specification.
Perhaps the way to handle it is to just put a note on the plan and have it come back to the planning board as the ARB, and provide samples of the actual veneer that's going to be installed, so that the board could get another bite of the apple once the actual material is proposed. But at this phase, since the thing hasn't been designed yet to, you know, for the purpose of the subdivision, put a note on there that kicks it back to the ARB for, you know, to have samples to approve.
I mean, if we're doing.
Then that might be the way to.
If we're doing a four-inch veneer, I can't imagine that this isn't going to be satisfactory to everybody. We just don't want it to look like a floor. We don't want it to look like floor, you know, floor pattern.
Did anyone say four inch? I didn't hear four inch. Did you say four inch, Jim?
A typical stone veneer would come in four or six inch. You can get it thinner, of course.
All right, I've seen thinner, and that's what I was worried about, so.
I mean, the intent is that we don't want it to look like a floor. We want it to look like a wall.
Right.
Understood.
Okay, I like the idea of the samples for the ARB. I think that would simplify it.
Very good. Okay, any other comments? Gareth?
No others.
Okay. Carolyn, do you have any questions or comments at this time? Alan saying no. Donna, do you have a question or comment at this time?
Yeah, I do. I do. Does Carolyn need to speak or no? Okay. Yeah, I do have a couple of comments. But I'm still concerned about that infiltration system built on a slope. I'm not really sure how you do that on a slope. So I'm very uncomfortable with that. And then it's, it says it's a six and a half foot wall on the other side of it. So I don't, I guess I would just, I would really like to see what that's going to, somehow how that's going to look from tour view, like how you would, what that area is going to look like. Because it just, it's such a huge area that all the trees are being removed. And then when you have that silt fencing, it goes all the way down to the property line. So I just would like to have a better idea. I don't know how to do that, but there must be a way to visualize it somehow. And I would really like to visualize it before, you know, I vote to approve this, because I have no idea what this is going to look like right now. And I think there should be a way to show us what it's going to look like. I also have serious problems with the planting plan. So I looked at the existing trees. Ninety-seven percent of the existing trees that are listed on inventory are deciduous trees. There's only seven evergreens. They're Norway spruce, which were obviously planted. They're Norway spruce. At some point, there was a lot more variety on the plan. There was sassafras and dogwood, hickory, catalba, in addition to the maples and oaks. And now you have one hundred and twelve evergreens and eighty-three deciduous. So I'm particularly concerned. So what people do around their homes, you know, I'm not going to comment on that. But, you know, since this is going to be, this is by tour view and by neighboring residents, and they live, the area was a deciduous hardwood forest, you know, compromised as it was in this particular neglected property. I don't see the point of putting evergreens at the property line. Seventy-six of the hundred and ninety-five trees that are proposed are juniverse. It doesn't make any sense to me at all. And then there's, so, you know, more evergreens than deciduous. So I think it needs to be rethought up. It needs to be looked at for a more diverse plan, like Valerie suggested. But I think a lot more thought needs to go into this. I'm also concerned with the slope, with planting trees. I'm not sure the, I'll hand the, four-inch diameter trees, those are massive. Like, I don't know how you're planting those on a slope. I can't even imagine how you plant a tray that size on a slope. And in addition to that, I don't know how you water it. So the goal is, should be to have like a successful planting, you know, shooting for a hundred percent, successful planting, and I don't see how you can do that. I would like to, I'd like to know how you're going to water them. That would be really good to have that information on these slopes, how that's going to even occur. So that's my comments for now.
Applicant, do you have any responses to that at this time?
So a couple, yeah, I do, actually. So we used the prior planting plan guide that had seven tree varieties on it. We picked six of those. If I may show you that plan, have permission to show my screen.
That plan was not approved.
That's comment number one. Comment number two, I don't believe we're talking about the same plan, because the percentage of evergreens that were mentioned, I don't think matched up to our drawing that we submitted.
It says four twenty-eight, twenty-one is the.
So this is our planting plan.
LA one oh one.
List. So there's red maples, there's red oaks, there's sugar maples, there are northern hackberry, there are red cedars, and there are white pines. And the white pines represent about twenty-five percent of the planting, as they did on the previously approved plan. So that's comment number one.
I don't think it was.
Comment number two, we can plant, if I may finish, comment number two is, planting on slopes is no great challenge. There are great techniques to plant on slopes as steep as two and one, and they can be done every day by a good landscaper. Comment number three, the survival of these plants, I'm sure the town has a survival requirement. We're obligated to warranty this product for at least a year. And once a tree survives for a year, it usually lasts after that. So that's the answer to the watering part. There are very many ways to water. We can put water sacks on them. We can have a gardener bring a hose them. Complications on watering in terms of assessment of planting is, there are multiple ways to do it, and we do it all the time. And we plant on steep slopes all the time. So if the board would like us to add variety to our tree planting plan, we'd be more than glad to do that. That's easy to do. We misread the first that I thought the board approved that had seven varieties of trees, and we used six of those. If I misread that, your acceptance of that plan as something that you thought was okay, then that was our fault. But we'd be glad to increase the number of tree types gladly.
So Valerie, the previous, I don't believe the previous time was accepted by the board, because we never got to that point.
Right, that's correct.
Right. So the applicant, I assume you now say that you will be actually diversifying the tree types more so, and you will also put in at least comments on how the issues about watering and the slopes will be accomplished?
Sure.
Donna, any other questions or comments at this time?
Yeah, I just, I disagree that a four-inch diameter tree should be planted on a steep slope. That's my comment.
I would assume the applicant would understand that if they hold them, they put something that would actually survive properly rather than having to go revisit this after a year.
I would also, if I may just add, I'm a volunteer with Cooperative Extension, so I've gotten a lot of training on this in addition to my experience. And a tree takes three to five years to settle in. And one year, a tree can definitely, on a, particularly a dry winter, can die on the third, fourth, or fifth year. So one year is not sufficient, and I would really request that we put a requirement for longer than one year.
I would heartily second that.
Any other questions or comments? Donna?
That's it.
Okay. Jim, do you have any other questions or comments at this time?
I'm good.
Okay. Is there any members of the public who wish to speak on this matter? Sandy?
If there's anyone that would like to speak on Stormy Town Road project, you can raise your virtual hand, or you can raise your hand in your camera.
I think there's only one person here that's a member of the public, right? Okay, so seeing no, no members of the public who wish to speak or comment. Valerie, what's our next step on this matter?
I think it's probably waiting for the applicant to, maybe my recommendation, we take the applicant's supervised landscaping plan, and then also get your report from the tree warden. And then hopefully, next month, we'll be able to wrap up this particular application.
Very good. Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Can I just?
Adjourn this applicant until the next meeting, which will be June sixteenth, correct?
Can I just ask one more question? Because I did ask to see some way to visualize what this is going to look like with that huge area with no trees, and it's a storm infiltration area. Like, is there some way that we can visualize what that's going to look like, particularly from tour view?
Applicant, do you have anything to respond? Applicant, I think you're muted.
No, Mr. Chairman, we have no response.
Just be aware that obviously Donna is going to be here the next meeting. You probably have to respond then.
Does anybody else know how that's going to look? I mean, are we just going to just wait and see until the project's done and just say, oh, that's the look like? I mean, I think we should have an idea of what it's going to look like.
To some extent, Donna, the infiltrators are below grade, and the elevation change is so drastic that you're basically looking from up through the trees, from one property to the other. If I had to present it, I'm not sure what I'd provide as well.
So, you know, what might be interesting is that if we could see where, if you had something beyond the property line, even on the flat map, like to show how much of the slope is on tour view's property, because they have trees. So that would give us an idea of how much tree coverage there is for them on their property.
Tour view is much lower, so they're never gonna see the pond, but they'll see the walls.
Right, but I'm saying how much of the, how, you know, where they have like a parking lot there, how much of the property is on the slope is their property that's not being touched by this project? Like, is there a way to show beyond the, you know, like, show some of the, of what their property is, like, even on a, on a, I mean, I don't know, I just, I can't get a sense.
Would you, would you like somebody to take a photo from the perspective of tour view? And just put that up as part of the record?
Well, that wouldn't show me how many of the trees are coming down. I mean, I'm just saying.
You could Photoshop trees, and it would give you an idea what it looked like, hopefully.
Well, I think I would prefer to see like the slope, how much of the slope is on tour view? Like, is there any way to, to visualize that? Or I guess I could just look at GIS.
If I remember this correctly from our site visits, the, the majority of the slope belonged, was not part of this project.
Okay, that's what, that's what I wanted to know, right.
Could I interject? You know, it'd be easy to get a profile through a, a single cross section. They would go from the top of the road of the cul-de-sac, through the wall, through the retention basin, down the hill, and into tour view. Just a single cross section, and then you can show, you know, even just with lines, the height of the trees that you would superimpose on there, and I think that would be very instructive. Could you do that, Chuck?
Yes, we can. I, I guess, this is an interesting discussion. As you understand that tour view, which is the property you're talking about, has land between us and the brook that is there, and, and tour view is zoned R20, and has the same development potential, actually active development potential as our site does. So we're doing this to protect adjacent property that's zoned R20 that could be developed as single-family lots. So yes, we can cut a section. I would ask, so that we don't come back to the next meeting, and someone say, that's not where we want the section. So if maybe Valerie could help identify the location. As, as, as one of the board members said, we are 30, 40, 50 feet above the adjacent property. When you look into our site, we have decorative walls, which you, you, board properly identified as a potential visual impact, and that's what you'll see. We also tried to plant trees on the rest of our property, so that from our pretty line in, we, we did the best to address your visual concern. That's all represented clearly on our drawings. The fact that we're so far above this, I think the, the board who mentioned is exactly correct. You're not gonna see any of the basin. You're, you won't even see the houses, to be honest with you, because they'll be blocked by the changing grade, depending where you're standing on the tour view property. So yes, we can cut a section. I would simply ask that the board or their consultant provide the location, so that we don't come, or ask that we didn't do it in the right place, with the goal of, again, trying to represent this, so you're comfortable with what you'll see.
Donna, is that okay? Garrett?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it would be best if, if Donna would be able to, to identify that section, that cross section line.
Well, just by where that, where all the trees are coming down, by the infiltration's area there. So just that, that area where the infiltration is.
It would, it, it would still be best.
The cul-de-sac and the, and the stream. It's like that area between the cul-de-sac.
Why don't you pull up the site plan now, and maybe we can have that quick conversation?
Yeah. Who, who has?
I think Chuck should have it.
Yeah, I think I can, give me a sec, I'm. If you could confirm that you can still. Site plan now? No, I was hoping it would be on that sheet, but it's not. So that's our site. I could cut a section right through there, if that's acceptable?
This is steep. That seems good.
That works for you?
Yes, thank you.
Right, okay. Okay, so this is, um, this is a public hearing being continued, so we'll adjourn it until this June 16th. Is there a motion to that effect?
Hang on, if I could say one last thing. On that cross section, I think that line should be extended farther into the tour view property. In fact, you can get the tour view topo data from LiDAR or wherever you normally get topo data from. I think it should be extended, you know, all the way across the tour view line. I don't think that's any extra work. And then you, it would answer the question about where tour view was on a slope and where it was flat. It would, it would solve those two things at once.
So you're, you're, you're just, I understand, you're suggesting that we extend it across the entire tour view property?
Yeah. I mean, that data is publicly available, that, that topo data.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn this matter to June 16th?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Donna, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carolyn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Garrett, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, so we see you back on the 16th. Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, too.
Okay, I understand we have an adjournment on the Casanassen 540 North State Road, adjourning to the 16th. They're not a public hearing, though, right?
No.
Okay, so is the Riverdale Stony Lodge property is also adjourned to the 16th? They are currently in a public hearing, are they not? Are they not as well? Okay.
They're not adjourned either. They're just not on the agenda at this point, because they have to come back with DEIS.
Right, okay. All right, so we'll, well, the board will see them come June for that matter. Next item on the agenda is the minutes from May 5th. Has the board met, had a pass to read over the May 5th minutes? Any, any questions or comments, other than Carolyn catching that? Have a motion to consider the, the minutes?
I make the motion. I make the motion. Second.
Hey, Garrett?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay, so, I'm sorry. Do we, could I have a, as there's no comments on it, are, are there any, can I have a motion to adopt the minutes?
Don't move. Second.
Garrett, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Donna, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carolyn, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. That means the statements are adopted. Okay, are there any other items on the agenda? Or we have to bring up? Sandy? Valerie? Christie? Garrett? Okay.
Can I just make a comment on, but it's, it's about terror rustica. Am I able to do that? Make a comment about them?
You can make a comment on, yeah.
Just about, there was that issue of, of music, and there was a dispute, there, there was difference of opinion if there was music, so I just wanted everyone to know that on this past weekend, the police were brought over there twice for very, very loud music, so. There you go. That's it.
Well, that code enforcement is not within our purview.
No, but just an update.
Okay. All right. Okay, there's no other items. All right, so could I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Don't move. A second.
Have a second? Okay, Garrett, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Donna, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carolyn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, and I will vote yes as well to adjourn it, but as a final note, I just wanted to make a, make a note that I will be resigning from the board. And I understand that the town board will be appointing a new chair upon their next meeting, but I don't know what they're going to be doing about that yet. So I just wanted to thank the rest of the board for their work and volunteerism on behalf of the town, and also, of course, the Environmental Advisory Council for their work that they've done for, for the, for the town as well. And of course, for the staff, including you, Christie, you know, when you're subbing in, for your, for your cooperation and your service as well. It's been a pleasure and honor serving with you folks. I'll see you in other venues, I hope, one way or another, in less onerous times.
Hate to see you go.
Yeah, we're gonna miss you.
Good luck, Chairman.
All right, see you, pal.
It's been great working with you, James.
Yeah, definitely.
Good work, and you folks, too. All right. Have a good night, all. Thank you very much.
Bye.
Bye-bye.